I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the British Isles, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is our September 3, 2024 council meeting. Kim, would you call the roll please? Councilor Musella?
Here.
Councilor Watson?
Here.
Councilor Reck?
Here.
Councilor King?
Here.
Mayor Short?
Here.
Councilor Solomon?
Here.
Councilor Beasley?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Are there any changes or additions to the revised agenda? And then, okay, I'm going to go ahead and read a proclamation into the record. This is National Preparedness Month of September 2024. Whereas each September is recognized as National Preparedness Month, and whereas National Preparedness Month creates an opportunity for people by community to be proactive and prepare for disaster. Resilience and communication are essential parts of a safer community. And whereas the National Preparedness Month theme is resilience with a focus on Asian Americans, maybe Hawaiian and Pacific Islander communities, and importance for diverse communities to prepare for disasters and build resistance, resilience before disaster strikes. And whereas every individual business and visitor within People Bay is encouraged to prepare to face the challenge of disaster, with adequate shelter, food, water, and supplies. And whereas the city of People Bay wants to change perceptions about emergency preparedness and help People Bay take simple steps to get ready and prepare for all types of hazards and natural man-made disasters. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of People Bay and State of Oregon, do hereby recognize September 2024 as Preparedness Month. And join cities across Oregon and the state to improve their preparedness and participate in making their homes and families ready for natural and man-made disasters. Due to this date of September. Is there a motion to accept the proclamation as submitted?
I can read that motion.
So a motion has been made and seconded to accept the proclamation. Is there any discussion on the motion? Yes.
Mayor, I support proclamations. But I think they should be serious. And this one has a huge distraction in it on this resilience with a focus on Asian Americans, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander communities. That's a distraction from the job at hand, which is to take care of the diverse People Bay community. And I'd just like to see that taken out. It's a distraction. It's kind of racial pandering, in my view. Other than that, I think it's pretty strong because it suggests that people and businesses and everybody has to take responsibility, has to step to the mark. And I do support that. But I think we should tighten this thing up and make it for People Bay.
Pardon me, I probably should have maybe in the email tell you about it. It's not our thing, this is FEMA's thing. Where the, every individual, this visitor within People Bay is encouraged to reserve. This is FEMA's thing. If the council wishes not to include FEMA's name, that's actually up to you. But that is everyone's duty. Everyone that spearheaded this since 2004 has spearheaded this campaign. And every year they change its name, and this year it's FEMA's.
Anyone else want to strike that?
Oh, I'm not interested in striking it particularly. Hawaiian and Pacific Islander communities are typically vulnerable. I don't know about the Asian American who that, of course, the focus of. But the Hawaiian Islands and Pacific Islands are just someplace with inches above sea level. And, you know, there was just a big storm that just hit Elo again. So it seems that the vulnerabilities of those areas are, maybe that's why they're having a focus on that. Maybe that bring more money to the area. I don't, I don't know about where the, basically, they're being. They tend to lump all those together, which I don't think they should be. But that seems to be the common thing to lump to Asian Americans with. Because that, that's how I hear them.
Can I have, with the proclamations, have they ever done similar things to other racial groups or groups of people?
I think this is one of those new, you know, things that have been coming out with the recent, you know, starting with me too discovery. And I think this is just one of those things where they really bring the diversity into it and remind everybody that it's not just.
Well, yeah, it's the, this year's National Preparedness Month theme is, so I think every year they sound like they didn't handle it.
They do. And I should have put FEMA, I apologize for that. I think I should have left that in, and that might have made some clarity for you. But we're focusing on our things. But I'm sure that we have, I mean, maybe we do have Pacific Islanders. I know we have Asian.
Sure, you do.
I know we have Asian Americans, and I'm sure, so. Well, yeah, we do have Pacific Islanders.
I think it's appropriate that we should just leave it as is.
Okay. Would you?
You're right, it's fine. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have a consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the Pacific Islanders presented?
I have a question or a comment on a, on the minutes. If I could.
Do we want to have a motion first?
Yeah.
But usually we don't, I know we can do a discussion.
Well, the motion to accept is presented. Or submitted?
So moved to second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion on the motion?
I have a discussion, but we quickly have it taken. Oh, well, I was gonna say, I found a typo. So I just realized that J does not have duty and recommendations for it. I'll get that fixed.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
J on page five for the appointment of emergency. I noticed there's a bunch of Xs in the counselor who made the recommendation and knows who's seconded, so I think you make that fix. I just flipped through the page and it just leaked out to me, so my apologies.
Okay, what was your question?
My comment is that, here it is on page four of 66. It is page two of the June 18 minutes. It says that Mayor Short, well, it said that, what was his name? Mayor Short said that she thinks Councilor Beasley has a conflict of interest regarding this topic. The topic was signs. That was not Mayor Short who said that.
Who was it?
I thought it was Mayor Short.
It was absolutely Mayor Short. I said it was her.
Oh, okay, all right. You know, I thought it was you, so.
I thought you did, no.
Okay, I stand corrected. Thank you for making that clear.
Well, I agree. I've got a question. On page 16, I'm just curious, because it reads that my road hologram would receive funds for a card reader, lunch card reader? I'm not sure. I know it's a test.
Payment for the boat launch.
So when he installed the new reader, he used his credit card to test that it works. So we're just free, I've actually held it, I won't forget him refunding for it. It was his $10 he paid to test the card reader.
Thank you.
That's all.
I think we give him a free boat launch.
I'll tell him, just tell him where that's from. He takes a skip out.
I think, I'm having a hard time finding this, my computer just blew it. But was this the minute where, oh yes, it's on page, sorry. It's on page five of 66 regarding this funding reach, People Bay sanitary description. I'd like to note the minutes to be a little bit more complete. It does not at all reflect that need and, just related to, I guess, what it's on.
You are correct, it does not. And you're right, it does need to say that. And I will get that clarified.
Okay. Can we see that order next word, please?
So you don't want, you want to pull these without approving consent agenda?
No, I just wanted to know how it's corrected.
Oh, I'll send you the number.
I have a question. I'm sorry, Sita?
Okay.
Oh, okay. Oh, we're starting to pay out on our repairs to the, well, however, is it possible to have a separate accounting of what our grants are and what we're spending on that? But we know where we're at, tracking.
Okay, so, okay, I think I have a, because you know we have three pots of money.
I know.
So.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Um, part of it is, is that when you look at, and you've not seen that, but if I give you the expenditure report, it will show the docs and it will show the amount of that. But if you want to know as each grant stream is taken, I would have to do a separate term and chief rather than the overall project.
Right. You just want total grant versus, yeah.
Okay, so if I give you the expenditure report monthly, you can see where it's all on there. So would that kind of, with that kind of, outlier will blow through the million in a month?
Yeah.
So can I ask a question about the 579?
Yeah.
Is, is the payment attached to milestones in the project? And so, for example, all that work that they're doing, doing all the correcting, building all of those things is, are we at an end of a milestone and that's why they're asking for money? Or is it just, whenever they want it, we give it to them?
You know what, I will double check with P and D to find out what their loss terms are. Their project schedule doesn't really identify loss terms that way. But you can see they've expended, they have three observation reports by the now, by the way. And all of those reports are now on the website, if you ever want to see them. So they've had three, so they're definitely doing a manufacturing, so it may trigger something, but I will find out what that triggers.
Yes, I'm just curious, you know, what usually happens in big projects like this is they get two-thirds or three-quarters of the way in, the budget's been spent, and now they're coming back and saying, oh, we need to get X number of dollars more. And so I do have change order.
Oh, they're absolutely not allowed to do that without a change order that you guys will prove they know that's not what I have.
It would just be really helpful if we knew what this 579 dollars in their project schedule is cut.
Oh, I can see if they have that, but I can certainly give you a printout of that accounting voice. It's mostly the supplies and of course the labor and effort. But if you'd like to see that, I'd be happy to subject you with the milestones. I might have to take that in my sights. Because I know the project schedule has timelines of things when they were going to do things. I just don't remember them ever saying that, oh, we'll ask you for pay. Usually it's when they get to a certain point and.
I choose what I mean, by the time they get to point A, then they can say, okay, we've done this much work, so you owe us this much money.
I mean, and we just got it, and we're gonna, they're gonna be here next month, which is very, very usual, very weird to think about that. After two years of caring about this project and much longer for you guys to know this year.
So one other question, your report here today. Is the capital outlay here under 111,000? Is that, however, in the history?
111,000? Are you, are you talking about, are you?
The second.
Did I, did I miss a number?
On the last page of the expenditure report, you see.
I missed the zero.
This would be the second packet.
Capital outlay?
Yeah.
Should be close to that, because we've had a lot of engineering bills as well. You know, the bills are getting high. Before the next meeting, this, by the end of this week, I'll give you an opinion. Okay, guys, consider that. And fix that.
Where was that zero?
Oh, I know why. It's not gonna be in here, this is due the end of July.
Oh, okay.
It's only number, I, we haven't closed that almost yet, because ours is finished. So this is through, if you look at the top of the report, it tells you what it's through, and this one is due July 30.
I wasn't looking for, I knew that it wasn't gonna be the 111,000. I was just wondering how much of the 111,000 applies.
Um, probably, based on the recent bills, maybe 8,000, 85,000.
Okay.
Because it's a lot of needed use time. They spend, they had a lot of time here, so.
So I'm very surprised. Just wondering if we could break that down somehow.
How do you know that broke out? Just, because what I can do is I can just write you, it sounds like you want a detailed tracking of this project, I will create something for you. But then you'll have to tell me how specific you want. I would hope that it wouldn't be for each invoice, but if that's what you want, then I'm happy to do that. So I will send you what I think might work for you, and you can tell me if you guys have any. But if that's what you want, we can use that for all of our big projects coming up, like Bay and Williams, Collins, Brady's been spending a lot of money on Collins. I can get that together for you. The timber bridge is even as little as the timber bridges. If you guys want more, but it's all, I mean, actual bright.
Just the big ones?
Yeah, okay. So what do you define as big?
4.5 million.
Okay. Is that your volume to say?
That's my volume.
Okay. Because we're gonna have the water at the Collins. So Collins is kind of a big one, so maybe we should include all of the state buildings and the water treatment planning, just to see if it, maybe overrunning.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about procurement tonight anyway. I'm thinking maybe it's the projects that's, it's down into the ones that have to go through dating process and all of that kind of stuff.
Well, a lot of them do though. Like, for example, the timber bridges at 78, 90,000 or 15,000, wet for bidding. I'm happy to create, in fact, I really want to start creating, and John's gonna help me create the capital improvement program with these, and do a little tracking on this. When I was in Placenter County, they used to call procurement forms. And they would fill them out, and they, every time something was paid against the contract, the value of the project, it would come off this form. It's just a way of tracking it. So I just need to know the limit for any capital project, which would be the actual project.
I would think the minimum. You know, we don't get it owners.
Yeah, exactly. Can I ask another question?
Sure.
So are we including this, the statement of the status versus budget as part of our percentage end, or we talk about later? We, it's.
The state revenue and expenditures. I can't, I can't believe I completely forgot this item to you. So except to the council, okay, we should pull it out and digest it and discuss it at the next meeting.
I would just like to just comment and say it's a great report. I, I like the report. I'm curious if it's available as a spreadsheet format, so we can do a percentage calculation to figure out how close are we to our budget?
I will put that percentage calculation in there for you. It's usually in there.
That's perfect. And, you know, it's a great report. I thank you for putting it together, because it's very helpful.
I wish I could get something down in the system for you, but that's the closest I can get to something.
So when Connie was here, she kept on harping on this, and I, she hasn't been harping on it. Maybe I should pick up that banner. But I really want to know fuel revenue versus expenditures.
That's my next thing to work on, I promise you, because I know it's very important to you, counselor, as well, is it these value factors?
Yeah, and then also, you know, as we're looking at, you know, I, you know, just like, well, you know, what does Harbor cost us? I'm not talking about the brands, I'm talking about personnel and garbage and water and sewer and everything, to, to be grabbing now.
I did make, I'm making a note again, but I did already write that down. It's something to work on.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? All in favor of accepting the consent agenda as submitted? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll go to our, you need a group report, emergency preparedness.
Yeah, we can start this thing. We are still in negotiations with the Board of Property, which is the property office. We submitted a figure, they've come back with a figure. And so the emergency preparedness committee is going to meet council and then to decide what we're going to do at some given point. And we also, I think I mentioned to you that we work, we got cash information from the Hatfield Room Science Center. And so my committee's been working sort of one-on-one with many people, trying to have the protocols that the Room Science Center suggested for to more to People Bay, which is a much smaller city than New York. Their cash was based on a roof block Hatfield Center. Ours is a little different. So Deb and I met yesterday and worked on medical. I'm gonna be with Randy, we're gonna go with supplies. And so we're trying to, you know, fight to adapt to needs. I also created a 12-month calendar, which is going to be focused on emergency preparedness. Like January, do this, February, do that. So I gave it to Kelly, Trudy, Kathy, and those others working on it, and Kumi, those others working on it. So hopefully that will be something that we can give to our public. And I think Reagan, I know she's not ready, but we appreciate you being here next meeting to bring that trauma back as to what the numbers are.
Yeah, there's, yeah, three of four.
That would be wonderful.
A, a lot of medical.
Wonderful, I appreciate that, thank you.
Sure.
That's all I have, thank you.
Jack for Harbor?
Jack over at Harbor Commission, April 1, September. Been working with city staff to create much needed rules and regulations on valuable operations in People Bay Harbor. We've had a little less met with the new People Bay Coast Guard Officer in Charge to the Harbor Commission, and also on the process for the new docks installation. And we're working on a proposal for crap by handling of the new docks and working with staff to get a Harbor area behind the Check Dan Bridge sooner rather than later. The Check Dan, area behind the Check Dan is scheduled to be dredged every 10 years.
10 years.
And the Harbor every 5 years. We have the Check Dan dredged probably two and a half, three years ago. And it is always already back up to where it was. The, the wells are walking along the, what's now the bottom of the southern part of the area. And so what, what the Harbor, Harbor Master would like to do, and we agree with him, is to see if we can get the Check Dan dredged first, and then dredge Harbor. The Coast Guard is having difficulty already, you know, the water they keep outside, they, it's turned against the seawall. But because of the silt, it's interfering with the runner and rocks. And I don't know about the intake that they have, so that having to come bow in now because of the rising, so. So things aren't getting better silt-wise, it's, it. Do I have any questions?
I do. Yes, Brad. Jack's beginning. So the City Council asked the Harbor Commission and the dot farmers to look at alternatives to crap lots of storage on the dock. We said no to crap up storage on the docks. And all we see from the Harbor Commission is we want crap up storage on the docks. And I just don't understand why essentially we didn't follow our direction.
I can, I can tell you that we, I believe that we did follow the direction. However, we're gonna make this proposal probably at the next City Council meeting, no later than the, our co-see council meeting on what we would like to see in the park.
Well, the City Council wanted to know options that are not crap up storage on the docks. And all we see from your report is crap up storage on the docks.
And I, I can't, because we haven't finalized the report and the suggestions, recommendations we made to you, I can't really speak to saying, okay, this is where we are, this is what we did. We have done, we've done research and everything on this particular issue. We'll get to it. For you.
You'll get to what?
I'll get, we'll get to, to, you're proposing to the City Council, either at the next City Council meeting in September, or in the, one of the, probably the, if we can't get to the next, it'll be the first one.
But are you gonna present alternatives? Or are you just gonna present what you're gonna present about crap lots on the dock?
We are gonna present to you what we think is a working solution and, and why. And then the City Council will make a decision based on that.
Thank you, thank you. Golly. Okay, um, morning, Steve, you don't want to bring us up to date on what's going on?
Well, we have a second downtown of the works. Our, almost all of our business the last couple of weeks has been in people hills. The phase two elementary plan was approved, which includes 30-some lots along the front of the hill, along, between Lilla and Avenue, the rest of it. And 30-some of those, all the nine or four, will be built for first combinations. And they're right around, centered around a core business area in a, in a watchtower or a meat tower that is planned. So that, it might be half as big as downtown, who knows? Now, if this plan goes through the whole community, there'll be about 400 houses up there, all exiting on Lilla and Avenue. So we'll be, there are two companies in there with that from a traffic standpoint. It hasn't come up yet, or the Department of Transportation hasn't sent anything yet, but it's a lot of traffic, we have a lot.
Wasn't a traffic study done?
There was.
There was, but.
I don't know what phase, day two, whatever, or that phase, because there was one.
It seems to me that 400 houses entering, you know, trying to turn left right after highway control, a blind corner is a little bit much. And then there's nobody out there walking, so that's something that needs to be considered as well. The state can have something to say about it, US have it. The other thing we did was approve VW lines for three, seven hundred homes up there, big one. So that's progressing. So that's, there's a lot of people living there.
Yeah, yeah.
Also, here, 2,000 residents.
I have a question. Question about, you just said there were gonna be 30, 30 homes that are going to be vacation rental type homes. Allowed for vacation. Is that still phase one? Because I thought he was just here and told us that phase two would have no vacation rentals.
So there's web watch and then there's People Bay.
Yeah.
It depends on which one he was talking about that time. I think it was Web Watch, but I'm looking, I'm actually looking at the gas on my right now.
And I, my understanding was, and maybe I'm wrong, but I thought there was gonna be 15% of the properties that were going to be allowed for vacation rental. And there's been a question about, is it 15% of the properties that are currently built? Or is it 15% of the properties that are in the phase that's going to allow for that? And I'd like to know who's keeping track of those to make sure that he doesn't go over 15%.
Our new city planner will. He has started today, and we have not dumped the hills and Whale Watch on them yet. But it's, we're gonna give them a week, and then we'll get it.
Our idea is that the only program that's up there are phases, it's a pretty. Our idea is that the only program that's up there are phase two, it's a pretty good.
But there's short-term rentals there now. All the Lillian Lane Avenue, all of those are, all of those are vacation rentals. Not all, but a good majority of them are vacation rentals. And those are the ones that were originally.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's not, that's not deep oil.
Right.
Yeah, most of the deep oil is still there. It's further up.
Right.
Yeah.
So, a-again, the question still is, who's, who's keeping track of it, making sure? And then, like I said, I, I could have swore I heard him say they're going to be vacation rentals in the second phase.
Okay, I thought he was talking about longer employee housing or something.
That's why I'm thinking it's whale watch.
I mean, so phase two's already been approved from the 30?
Oh, no.
No, working on.
And we will do, you know, we'll approve individual units too, when, when those go away. They'll, they'll come with the planning commission as well. So this is just the first step in that, like, that part of that. A, the ones already been done. Phase two is, phase two, A and B. That one road going out of, of, of Gulf of Blow, that was going to have 50% grid on it, so there won't be a lot of driving on it in January, February. And.
I found the master plan for those. Can't believe I found it so fast, but I found it. So it's old, but we'll see, we'll see how we're updated on it. But it looks like the detached single-family homes owner occupied gets 50%. So that 400%. Detached single-family homes tourist accommodation is 88, 22%. Townhomes tourist accommodations in the R2 or C1 are 63, 16%. And multifamily mansions, can't wait to see that, it's four units per building, 48, 12%.
Wait, did this already come in part of the City Council?
Years, years, years.
But didn't we restrict it to 15% vacation rental, when you're saying it's 22%?
I'm looking at a, I will don't check it, but I'm looking at what the master plan was. I'll look at the findings, I'll look at the findings.
Were you restricted it to 15%?
I'll look for the findings.
Good ordinance in there, so, right?
Well, it's part of the master plan.
Would have been restriction on the master plan.
Your space.
A condition of approval.
Your space. Yeah, we don't, let's not get into it now, but maybe we could have that presented to us.
It's good to know, because we're not aware of it.
We will find this information and get to the latest and greatest of what a area is supposed to look like on any houses. Because you're right, it has changed, so.
I'm really curious about the commercial area too, that you're talking about Hudson and we may suggest, like another downtown.
Well, there's, there's, there's two commercial areas. One is, is planned to be right along the highway down at the bottom of the hill. And, and, and I've seen plots for that. Then there was this new commercial area up around the watch tower, there's two lots there, because they're going to have a zoning change, make seawall around, but what looks like a. An old stone, yeah, view, marlot viewing tower kind of thing. They've been rather targeted in terms of, you know, as, well, you know, you need to think that look like is always in there. So people don't look at, oh, that's ugly and new. And they, they agree, but it's, um, there are some examples of that. But there, around that, probably the base of that, there'll be some businesses.
It's, it's, right.
At the bottom.
Similar to South Shore. Is what their.
The master, right, it's going to come to us. From what, what I first think of that was told when I came on the floor is that it's going to have small eateries and boutique stores. The plaza will be surrounded by small eateries and boutique stores that complement the character of them, while keeping the feel, people base a small coast community. Um, there will be many different viewing quarters and seating areas within the commercial zoning to complement the walkability, the development, encourage movement and exploration. Um, they have things like a coffee shop, ice cream, you could say eateries, bookstore, painting crafts, art studio, boutique clothing, candy shop, post office. Anything they're going to.
They'll probably just say anything they want.
They're going to say this is their potential, they have not identified anything in particular.
So this has not been approved by us yet?
This has.
When was this approved?
Was this? Phase, uh, I would be engaged, but this has been going on like years.
Oh, yeah.
The prelim, so what, this is a preliminary plan, yes.
So let me, um, we'll get to the final, this is, yeah, we'll get to the final, but it's not been any time recently. It's been a while.
It was 2015 or anything.
Yeah, I was going to say it's been a while.
But as each one of these phases are developed out, they go through, like.
Plan, yep.
Correct, so they have to go through planning. We just approved the phase two. He came in and he presented the 30 town, or the 30 workforce housing units.
You approved the zoning change.
Correct.
Yes.
To allow for him to do.
Right, you have not approved phase two in either one of them, yeah, this part of the area.
And so I guess my question is, we are, we're doing it in steps. We're not going to take the entire planned unit development for phase two and just approve it as a, as a whole? Because I, my understa-, in, in previous conversations that we've had on the council, we've been told it's, it's done. We're, we've already, we're past that, we can't put any more conditions on it, it's, it's finished. And so conditions of development are part of the process that we go through planning.
Right, sure.
And, and so.
That's what they're doing.
I, I thought we were.
And they come to the City Council.
Agree.
Why do they come to the City Council once the planning commission approves it?
They don't.
They don't, no, they don't.
Well, then there's the zoning change, and there will be that.
The only time they come is if there's a protest and ends up being filed to the City Council.
Yeah, to the field, right.
I mean.
Or change.
Your body of the apple is kind of done unless there's a reason to bring it back.
Well, if it was approved with 15%, now they have 22%, how does that happen?
We'll find out what happened on that. Nobody has ever said that percentage to me, so, meaning Carla hasn't said it, Kit never mentioned it, so we'll find out.
So what is the public hearing for on September 11th? Is it for this year, man? It's not posted up?
It was continued.
Oh.
They weren't ready, they didn't have, we ju-, they had just gotten, they were ready to get their stuff, so it's continued to the September 11th.
It's continued to next week.
Well, that's my career.
We'll be getting that on Thursday, that's a staff report.
Yeah.
I have a question, I was going to say, so when they're based to now, how many phases are there, what are the goals?
The master plan says six. Now, that, if that's been updated, I will find out.
We probably won't. Probably won't, yeah, for both.
No, that's just.
Yes.
That's just an adult.
The, the odds of the last two pages ever being developed are slim, usually, given history. Not just the history of the general. So usually you can get four, six, you know, the last couple of pages just don't ever happen. Because they run out of money or something.
So, uh, the planning commission approves the commercial area along the, um.
We have not.
Along the highway?
That hasn't been, there, there was a zoning change last, a couple of months ago, and the City Council approved it. And I believe there was, part of that was to move some C1 into R1 or R2 or something like that, to swap some land around and make room for. To concentrate the business area and make room for a place water font or a retention. Um, and so that was, that was taken care of, the City Council approved that, but that was basically just down the top of the hill. Stuff at the top of the hill, there was, there will be a zoning change over there.
Well, I'm more concerned about, um, I'm concerned about a lot of it, but I'm more concerned about sprawl commercial areas up in downtown 101. We have a nice compact downtown now. And maintaining, uh, the buffer of vegetation and trees, so it doesn't look like a sprawled community. And right now, we don't have that from what we approved last time. But from what you're saying, they, they have a vision of a whole commercial area down by 101.
I totally guess down by 101, I think it's up in the hills.
No, no, there is one down there by 101. Uh, the area around 101 is seawall already.
Um, no, it was R1. R4, excuse me, R4.
No, it's, you guys changed, Jamie.
It's C1.
Yeah.
There, there was some, there was some movement around to make more of the C1 area more. Compact or cohesive. And that was the resolution that was approved at the City Council meeting that took, took it on. There will be a couple of lots that they want to make C1 on the top of the hill, but that hasn't been done yet.
I'm concerned that when the payment for none of us is not, Jamie, what he said he was going to do, this sounds totally different.
I, I think we need some confirmation before we worry about that.
Yes.
We'll do the research and get, get, get the paperwork in. And that'll be good, and there's no problem.
That'll get him introduced to it, that's for sure.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Scott.
I appreciate it.
Uh, I don't see, seven, four.
Seven hasn't had any meetings for a second time.
Oh, that's, okay. Uh, public comments, do you have public comments to speak in?
Uh, if anybody has public comment online, uh, after the people that are here get a chance to speak, please raise your hand. Anybody speak in here? Nope, okay.
Uh, nobody raised their hand?
Nobody raised their hand?
No.
Thank you.
We have a, um, an ordinance, uh, before us. First reading, and this ordinance number 349-24. And ordinance repealing replacing ordinance 329-21, adopting public contracting and purchasing rules with a new ordinance adopting public contracting and purchasing rules. Based on updates to state schedule. So Kim, do you want to go over this before us real quickly?
Um, my staff report, I've been just told you, uh, as I said in the email today, there have been updates since 2020. It's about 2021, this was 2020 place. I don't know all the updates, I did not take the time to eat them out. But I did send you guys the links to where the, all the updates over the years have been. This, this, those have not been like huge updates, but this one was because it was to the thresholds. So exhibit B is the one that chose, and I should have showed you exhibit A, but you got the ordinance, so you should have seen it. Exhibit A to see where the thresholds changed. Couple of other things we changed is a signature authority and approval, and who gets to, to walk and buy without running through. The process or what process and making sure that everybody gets to do the process, the right process. Um, for example, um, you know, Paul and Brady is Public Works Director. They go all the way up to 1,000 without having to, uh, look at whether or not they can do some other kind of award. Brady has approval authority up to 5,000 based on selection, and that's, he could do a direct award. He has a document, why he does the work, or anything over 5,000 would go as a small procurement. One of the major thresholds was signature authority, so anything over, um, it's actually 7,500. Uh, so what we kind of kept our, we could have if anything up until 7,500 gets approved without, that's the new threshold. Uh, but I kind of kept it at 5,000 thinking that having that additional level of, uh, paperwork and documentation. Um, we are getting a lot of training going on this and getting everybody on the same page about what at least actually need a procurement. So just working through that. But the thresholds, when it's the 5,000 to 7,500 is what they get, they raise the ceiling on the small procurement. All right, excuse me, right.
So before we give discussion on this, I need a motion to, um, accept the great ordinance number 349-24 written to the record by title only. So I will, I move to conduct a first reading of by title only of ordinance 349-24, repeal and replace the public contract ordinance to match state requirements and thresholds. Is there a second?
Awesome.
So we moved to second to accept a first reading of the ordinance number 349-24. Is there any discussion on the motion?
So I have a point here.
No, no, this is for to accept by title only. By title only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And I'll open up for discussion.
Um, Harvey Mayor has had a review, full heading by title only.
And ordinance repealing or replacing ordinance 34, 329-21, adopting public contracting and purchasing rules with new ordinance adopting public contracting and purchasing rules. Based on updates to state schedule. Now, can we open it for discussion? Thank you. Onward we go.
Okay, so, uh, as I look at exhibit B, it, it says that employees have approval authority. Public Works Director, it mentions who can, uh, go out and approve and buy stuff. But, uh, I don't see anywhere in here for city counselors to go out and buy things. Are we allowed to do that or not?
With my rule, based on what they're doing. Every counselor who has spent money has done it, they've come and talked to me about what they needed to purchase, where they were going to purchase it. And, um, why they were going to purchase it.
Does that fall under the rules of council or that kind of?
It, it does, actually, a, 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 a council is also has authority to make purchases as need as a public service, public bishop. They have to follow the state course.
Okay.
Okay, yes.
So, um, it's at the bottom of page 27, 28, 29, authority of responsible building, city administrator report. So, um, you know, this is new, we have a three quarter, now we have a administrator. Um, number one, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with it. It allows the city administrator reporter, um, to go ahead and award contracts in the maintenance. Um, without specific authorization. Um, when proposed expenditure is included in the current fiscal year budget. My concern with that is our budget, you know, later on, we'll, we'll, we talk about budget and says, oh, that was in the budget. We don't really have, we have line items that are just general, right? We don't have, this is a specific item that we're going to get this fiscal year. And, um. So this came up during the, um, the sheriff's information, oh, we'll just put it in the budget and then it will come back. And that would have fallen under City Council approval because it is over a certain amount. But. I think how I'd like it to read, but maybe it's not practical, is that the proposed expenditure is specifically. Um, specifically detailed, um, and in the current fiscal year budget. Because right now, it just says, you know, for example, I'm just getting on wastewater. Wastewater has a budget on that, and it doesn't have, you know, we're going to buy a clarifier, and we're going to buy this, and we're going to go buy that. And you don't have those details. And then sometimes in the past, we've had earmarks or, um, excuse me, notes, budget notes, which say, this is, you know. We expect to spend 200,000 for a clarifier and 100,000 for this in the total. So I'm a little bit concerned that the assumption to the current fiscal year budget, but we really don't know what we're, I mean, I don't know what we're budgeting for half the time. Specifically.
Okay, if I might address, when we went through the budget, remember all the blue items? There was the black programs I did, and I said underneath it, I laid out every project we plan to do this year. I laid out the cotton street, I laid out the clarifier purchase, I think it was, clarifier, it was the pumps, I laid out everything we planned to purchase. It would be, that's what this is for, that's not for anything that we have not finalized on, that we have not solidified. That doesn't come in over then what we said, but the blue items in the budget. So it was like under each of the capital, under each of, of contracted services, I wrote down every.
Well, that's great, how do we make sure?
That's the great thing.
Is, but that's exactly what I'm saying, right? But it doesn't, says this is included in the current fiscal year budget. How do we know if those items include, what's the name of those items in blue?
I, I put them in the budget that you, uh, reviewed during the budget committee, that was adopted by the council.
I'm, I'm not making myself.
Oh, I'm sorry, am I, would we re-inform, how would we refer?
So when I read this, it was like, what if, if it's in the budget? Well, budget is big document that has, you know, general line items and specific. That's why I want the specificity. And I don't know what we call those blue items.
Um, I just would call projects identified in budget or approved by the, by the budget, but if you have another terminology for them, half of the, I say.
So, can I ask a?
Yes.
So in this particular section, the $100,000 number is concerning because it seems to conflict with appendix B, which says $10,000. And so, um, are we saying here that in, in this particular section, and I highlighted the whole section because I wasn't sure what we were asking here. Are we saying here that our city administrator reporter can spend the $100,000 of, uh, of the city's money without getting any approval from the council? To spend that if it's. to spend that if it's in the budget?
Correct, because you went through the budget process and I gave you the quotes and you approved it.
And so then I, I'm kind of agreeing, I actually I'm fully agreeing with what Fran is asking here. We don't have a project based budget particularly. And so I think what we would, what, what I think I hear her saying is she would like, and I would like as well, to only allow that approval if it's a blue line item where we've called it out specifically that we're going to spend this amount of money on.
Maybe called out specifically in the budget as a, as a project, as a, um, specifically called, I'm not specifically called out in the budget? I, I don't really want to use the blue light, I, because I think that would be confusing, so, um.
No, no, yeah.
As itemized in the budget?
As detailed in the budget.
I would like to, like specific project, line items or something to that effect because
Um.
Um, like the sheriff, so we put a lot of things into the budget that we thought, you know what, we, we may need to spend money on a plant, so we put it in the budget. We may want to spend money on a sheriff, so we put it in the budget. But this line item says, we've put it in the budget and so if our city administrator slash recorder wanted to enter into a contract with the sheriff, she can do that without our approval.
She wouldn't, but I get where you're coming from.
And so I, I'm just, I think we need to be a little careful here about how this is worded and what we're actually.
I'm trying to think of how we can do this without, like say, for example, I can easily put together a, um, like an attachment as an attachment, like a project list in the attachment, but then you're going to have to do it, you're going to have to ask the ordinance every year to approve the attachment. So what we could do is we could do a resolution saying that, you know, under, not, not with this, but saying under this, one of these projects that would be approved to under this, but, um.
What about that wording, that a, specifically itemized in the budget?
Why put that in there, that's what you do.
Because that's what we have. But that, you know, that, the note should reflect that that's what we're talking about. That is the blue items in our, for city council note should reflect, so you remember what we're talking about.
Okay, I'll, I'll have Gina put in the notes that it specifically refers to the items in the budget in the blue.
I think I know.
Now next year, I will hopefully be presenting you with an actual capital improvement program that John will be helping you go together that will take care of that. Okay.
Thank you, by the way, for getting this put together. Greatness. Greatness.
Well, I just want to make sure that we're doing it right, that's, I know it's our job to make sure that we're doing it right because regular schools are, they tire our hands sometimes, that's something that we need to do.
Isn't this accepting us or, or making us exempt from the state's rules? Unless we specifically say we're going to follow the state's rules.
Right.
And so we're.
But it doesn't make us exempt from the ORS. So that's why the language said, what it said in here is that these are languages that are designed, that we didn't put together to help cities versus go through those, like you said, onerous ORSs, and I've read those onerous ORSs many times, this is back in this county, including the pool, this just kind of synopsizes it. Um, but we're saying these are our rules. To the extent that we are not actually conflicting in a way that the ORSs don't like, these are our rules. But like when they talk about exceptions to the contract, they, like, I mean, if you're doing a big project, we decided we want to go out on a different rate or a different bid, that's when we get the ORS involved, because that's very complicated and that's not anywhere. So it, it marries the two, but this is separate. I know it doesn't probably seem separate, but it is.
Yes, so, um, going back to what Rick said, it would make sense indeed of the already responsible city administrator recorder to, like, have another line perhaps? Because there's a delegation of signature authority, but maybe to reflect that purchases by, um, commissions, councilors and commissioners, um, for city work need to be authorized and writing by the, documented and writing by the administrator slash recorder.
I would hate to say that every purchase that somebody needs to make, like how much was spent recently? Thirty, forty dollars would have to be documented, except for copy the receipt with written on what it's for.
Oh, set of, set of amount, two hundred?
That's up to you, that's up to you.
Whatever. Um, but I think, um, there should be some documentation for after the backing, but, um, that it was approved, that, that expenditure was approved.
Thank you, Counselor, I appreciate it.
So what's our limit? Have what limit, do you need to do documentation for that triple three hundred?
So is that just going to be in the appendix B?
No, I think it's under D, it's just the authority to delegate.
Oh, and then it can be documented in, in appendix B or exhibit B as to what those are?
I'm not sure it needs to be in the, what's the title of this here?
Uh, it's exhibit B, so it's page forty four.
I know, but why does it need to be, it's just established, but it is an establishment procedure. Oh, just the amount.
Yeah, so the amount is there and then the documentation required and then, what I'm thinking is long term, it's much easier to fix an appendix or an appendix exhibit than it is to go and change the order.
So maybe it would just be under the small procurement goods and services?
Actually, if it's an ordinance, even though it's a part of it, it doesn't make it long term. I mean, I see what you're saying, just by throwing out the old exhibit.
So can we pull it?
So you want to sort of admit, accept that you want to put it, I see what you're saying, you want to put it as a threshold as exhibit B, so then we, it is easy, you're right, it is easy to pull the exhibit.
And I'm just wondering if it makes sense to make exhibit B be a resolution and then it's easier to change your resolution than it is than it is to change a, an ordinance.
Okay. We would review the resolution every year, but we have other things we review, so we can certainly do that if that's, you think.
That way it, it brings procurement into the forefront every year because you're going to have to look at it to update. When you do the resolution to update all of the fee structures and all those kinds of things, at least we're looking at it saying, you know what, we agree or we don't agree with it, I'm just throwing something out to, to discuss.
Sounds good to me, didn't work with that. So I don't know how you. So, um, here it says zero requirement for employee backing required is none. Um, so maybe that's what we do to yeah, for cities, counselors and commissioners.
Right. Zero, three hundred, zero? All right, zero, three hundred.
Uh, no, I'm saying you sustain one.
Oh, you sustain one?
But it's a little bit different because approval authority would be you.
Right, and Brady's team doesn't go spending money without telling him. It says we don't have, they're, we're not asking them to give us anything but essentially a receipt. But just like my staff does, every, they don't make a purchase without talking to us.
So the approval authority would be the, uh, the recorder?
Yeah, actually, uh, and so approval authority would actually be me, Brady and Paul.
But it says employee.
I know, we can change that.
Yeah, let's do that.
Because they ask, we just are more comfortable that way.
Or say make a separate, um, line item for, uh, counselors and commissioners.
Okay, fashion, I'm with you. Okay. Split to three hundred, not five hundred?
I don't know, right, what do people think? Five hundred?
I think five hundred is.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would be okay with five hundred.
Okay.
All right.
One, one other question that I made.
Yes.
Um, the surplus property section, so we just approved the disposal of surplus property. Does this section now move that so that council no longer approves surplus property? It's up to the city recorder administrator.
No, I want you guys to, I want you to break it to you, I want you to know what we're disposing of, because I don't want to tell you how much the ads made from. If they're going to make money.
So we might want to look at the language in there, because I think it's saying that you can decide that on time.
The council could choose to at a later date to say city recorder administrator, we don't, we don't care, you do it. But I'd like to reserve the option to just keep doing it and let another council say, you know what, we don't need to see these anymore, thank you very much. Or I've been putting there that they.
So right now it's saying, this, this one says that you can do it without our approval. What we currently have is our approval and they need to do it.
Right, but maybe the council at some future date doesn't want to see this surplus resolution, I don't know. But I can do whatever you want. What, but what page is that, you're faster than that one?
I'm on, um, page thirty nine.
Ah, it's just there, okay.
I don't know if it's that important other than we seem to be rid of, what was the last one? Twenty thousand dollars for thereabouts?
Yeah, maybe eighteen thousand dollars and one hundred after the ten percent they took, so. We're, Brady and I have no interest in, except if it's real, John will just throw things out. We are going to be always trying to get money, but I can change it so that, uh, that Brady has a recipe, Brady has our resolution to say, I don't think we need to.
Yeah.
She's like, I don't see him.
Well, I, that is the one, did we really, did we bother to go through that the last time, like? I don't know, are we, are we getting rid of significant, or significant city property?
You got rid of the most significant city property we have to get rid of.
What happened last time when we changed all the vehicles around the trucks? I see that wastewater did, uh, a, could have been impacted virtually.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, say what?
When we got rid of the old trucks, we replaced them with city trucks. That went to surplus like a movie years ago. Do you remember Brady?
Well, we, we've always had city trucks.
Well, we just upgraded them.
Oh, yeah, we used to have like, yeah, we would sell them a surplus through, like the new signs would do down here.
Mm-hmm.
And then we, we would have sealed bids, we, we'd take the highest bid to seal on the low. And now we're taking them to an auction and being.
And for ten percent, they do all the work.
Yeah, correct. Are we going to take that?
I think we should leave it in, which allows the, the administrator to make that choice and not into the council, but that's, that's just my opinion. I, I just, I don't know that we're close enough to that and, and that the stuff we're getting rid of seems to be of, of pretty much low value or minimal value.
Minimal value, but I think we actually got more for everyone, for the auction than Brady was going to get from the trucks before. We were very surprised that one of the trucks, that was not, whatever that was, it was too high.
Yeah, it was a quota truck.
Brady was talking that it went so high, considering they got there on a wing and prayer.
It also restricts the sale to city employees, so.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other, any other comments? Um, is there a motion or are the motions in place?
Yeah, why don't you let me revise it instead of, yeah, you've already did a first reading, let me revise it, very bad concept, I just said.
Okay.
There's not, there're not major changes, but moving exhibit B.
Okay. Okay, let's go to here. Let's scroll down to the page here. Sixty six. Sixty six, thank you, dear. You're at one sixty six.
Forty five.
Forty five, no. Is it forty, page forty five?
Yeah, page forty five.
Thank you, thank you, guys. Okay, um, we have a letter to the county clerk. Uh, there are positions opened here on council and they are being challenged and I will read this. The city of DeKalb, oh, dear Amy, from Amy's South, South, Michael County clerk. Listed on a, um, the city of DeKalb has four elected positions expiring December thirty first, two thousand twenty four. Listed are the expired term positions with the names of persons that have filed for candidacy as of five p.m. on August twenty seventh. Please include the following individuals on the November fifth ballot. Uh, mayor Cindy Chufel?
Chufel.
Chufel.
Chufel, yeah, worry about that. And myself. Um, council position number one, Autumn Watson, council position, oh, uh, and Kathy Wyatt. Council position number two, Eva Harmon. Council position number three, Hannah Grant and Debbie Bullen. If there's any further information, maybe regarding this candidacy, please do not update, let me know. Okay, um, we've got a license renewal update, um, and an ordinance review. Kim, you want to bring us up to date on that?
Um, I think my staff report was pretty detailed on this, so if there's any questions or comments, I will tell you that I looked at a lot of city business licenses. And one of the things that I've kept hearing over the last two years is that our license fee is too low, our license fee is too low. It's actually not. Um, our eighty six is pretty comparable to a lot of places. There are some places, of course, that are higher, but if you look at cities that are near our size, even if they're along the coast or mine, we're pretty close, um. Some of the differences I found out is that some of these cities do it based on employees, so set a base rate like we did and then they'll add, or actually just couple ways, they'll set a base rate and then every employee is like seven dollars. So it would be like say fifty and then it would be three employees, you'd add seven times three, so that would be fifty. Um, they, some places count the owners, some don't. The majority of our business licenses, even for the businesses downtown, are usually they only pay one employee. Uh, that's the, that type of stuff is really hard to track. Um, so there's a lot of different ways we can do this and it's really, this is just a draft, a first draft of what I was thinking we were looking at. Um, we talked about it, we kind of like to just get to some kind of category and look at the categories. Um, at the bottom I put that the various different options you can have, but I'm trying to keep us priced within it, so there, we're not agree, you know, we're not too much to get people to come in our city, but, uh, or we're too low that we're not, you know, that we're having these impacts on here, so. But there's all kinds of ways to do this, I really just need to know where you guys are thinking.
You did a lot of work on this, that's for sure, and that's appreciated, um.
Been working on it for a year, I started this last November, that's all August, to try and be to November, you do it, so every time I've been able to, I've been working on it and just doing the research, it's been, wow. See how everybody's doing it and everybody's doing it different and, you know, um, the ways that they do it, um, you know, um, some places are even less than this, so really, a lot of it depends probably on the city and, you know, maybe they're what their region likes, but I matched this, we're at a hundred, we're higher than Wall porch. I think we're higher than y'all asked for the base rate. Now, they have lower base rates, but they also will charge per employee. But how they track how many employees that my actually says they have, I don't know that they're doing that.
Yes, I have a question, it could be, I'm clueless what I'm asking. Could you speak up? Well, do we require any kind of proof of insurance for people that are calling people in their goats or their cars or whatever?
Do we require any kind of proof of insurance? No, but we will now, we will now, is that?
That was one of your questions, that would be on the application and yes, I believe it's an ordinance that they have to meet these requirements, so. They, a lot of the requirements in most cities have this, is they have to have, like, they have to be, if they're, uh, if they're sold compared kind of different, but if they're business, they have to be registered separately or state. If they're contractor, they have to have a CCB license, um, all these different things. If they're a fishing guide, store's an outfitter, they have to be registered licensed with ordinance they're in for.
So we are.
We are going to start requiring.
We are going to have a checklist and we're going to confirm, okay, cool, thank you. Let me ask you that.
Yes, you did, and I made sure we have.
Question.
Uh, pardon me if I might, I'd bring it up.
Yeah, thank you very much for doing all this work, it was, yeah, I don't, um, I think it's too hard to verify employees. I don't want to go there, I like this, these categories, I think that's, um, that's helpful.
I'm open to suggestions on the categories or anything like that.
But the other thing is, um, I've seen, um, sign, I don't have a lot of timing, but, um, people don't know they need a business license, stop right in people there. So that should be on our website or a sign coming in town, also that they might be building from his.
Also that they might be building from this one.
Yes.
Yeah, but I mean, the thing is, you know, check in the city hall, business licenses and permits are required for. You know, developing. Do we, so they there be new annual, correct?
Yes.
Do we send them a notice that?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Oh, we should send out the notice with a letter saying you gotta renew that.
Oh, by the way, we need to have this.
When we send this out to this one, once you guys list it and prove it, we're gonna send this out as the new. We're gonna start long for twenty twenty four or this next this year. That's why I'm I wanna try to get a draft and then maybe get to the first reading.
But is that a calendar year, fiscal year, or is there a date on the license?
It's cal, well, she does it every year, remember, so it's just calendar, they're a calendar, why they pick a member, I really don't know.
So what happens is prorated in their half a year?
Yes.
So.
July, oh, July.
Um. Couple comments if I may.
I'm pardon me, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, never.
Uh, thank you. You gave us some figures at the last meeting at our revenue meeting on how much business license is written here, what is given out?
Um, look at your revenue and expenditure report that I just gave you, uh, but that's not the year though, maybe look.
So far this year we received two hundred and forty six dollars in taxes.
Yeah, but this isn't the time that they. Give me, you know, if somebody else has another common question.
The budget is thirty five thousand.
And that went up, cuz we we have some nice revenue.
You're saying we get about forty thousand dollars a year on these business fees?
Thirty five, that's what I'm saying.
Thirty five, okay.
I'll tell you in.
What's the difference between a transient business license and vending and distributed license? And one, a business operating in the city, but it does not have an office in the city.
Right.
And then you have vending routes and food distributors which seem to qualify as a business operating.
It does, but they're usually just filling soda machines and different things, so they're not. They don't have as much of that impact, they may only fill, I don't know, a couple soda machines, right, but I stole this from uh Seaside. So.
I've got, do I?
But transient is like, for example, um, let me give you an example, our attorney. He, they didn't, they operated out of Walport, so they're typically seventy five. But if Dave was coming in and filling a couple of vending machines, they would have made it there.
Why do you why do you make those both seventy five?
I can do that, that's what you would wish.
And, uh.
And the reason that transient business licenses and these vendings are too low or is because they don't have an office here. They don't, they're in and out, or not even in most of the time, so.
Why don't you make the home based businesses, why don't we do this? Council, make that seventy five, just have a seventy five dollar category instead of prices, but all of them now.
Uh, we can do that, home based businesses, you know, as it the one eight six fifty is what we were paid on that, they don't have any impact on the city. Our home based businesses don't, others do because they allow trucks and things, but we don't. Or we don't have, they can't have signs, they can't have people, they're just, like, for example, my home based business, all I do is do computer work, I don't have anybody come in here. So, um, other businesses too, so that's the only reason that this was, um, again, at Seaside, this says that. They just don't have that kind of an impact, they don't.
Well, maybe we should get rid of it then. If they don't have an impact, why are we even charging them?
No, they're positive that. We don't have any negative on impact on the city, I mean, they're not using, um, they're not using, uh, the streets as for parking, they're not. Putting a lot of extra current roads, they're not.
I think we should leave that.
It's up to you guys, I'm only looking at what I know.
They don't watch or they don't watch charge them.
That's again, obviously, but I think they don't have.
No, maybe they should have.
Yes, and that's a good reason why a lot of cities have a business license program, it's not as much because you don't make a lot, but because you wanna know who's operating your thing. So knowing who these home bases, we have to prove all these when they come in, so knowing who they are is really good to do.
So all the trucks that deliver supplies to businesses, um.
As in.
And parking.
That's my other head.
Impacts, right, where they're not supposed to.
Yes.
Um, do, does each company supposedly get a business license?
They should, if we wanna hold them to, oh, uh, what did it say, U P, wait a minute, there's.
Those distributors.
Yeah, hang on a second, there was a description and we can always change it with a. Let me look here. Um.
Was that?
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, uh, vending distributing, vending routes such as placement distribution, amusement, supplies, pop machines, et cetera, food distributors. Advertising solicitors and laundry services, for example, we have, uh, we have people who sell advertising space. In their magazines, we don't require them to have a license and yet they come in and they go around our city, they're like, they're like, uh, peddlers, like.
What do you mean they come in, I mean, most of the advertising people.
Oh, I'm not talking about newspaper.
Well.
I'm talking about like magazines and things like that, I mean, that's kind of what this is about.
Okay, um.
Like, uh.
Or even those magazines, they conduct all their their sales by fax, phone and email, they don't come into town. I mean, do we charge them?
That's something we can further investigate, I mean, I, this is, I can see how other cities wonder about if they've changed the way they do that. Because you're right, a lot of these places don't have a physical process.
In fact, I haven't seen a traveling salesman in years.
Oh, I have. Damn, I did put my nose listed on that door, that's what happens when you don't do that. Be a test control people.
Okay.
Um, but, you know, that would sit under if we decided that that would include that, those types of categories, even if they don't business, do business in the city. That would be, um, that could fall under the seventy dollars, so it's really gonna be or the seventy five or however we do it.
That's gonna be hard to.
It is going only hard, yeah.
The one idea that I heard here tonight that I really liked came from Council Rec with a sign, I've seen those signs. Where they say seventy five dollar business license required or something like that, you know, white on green, a regular road sign.
I was just saying, where would we put those signs without, cuz we have to put all of this on here on a sign or just, you're just saying, instead of seventy five, you're just saying that. You know, because, because we, so we would need a sign that would say, you need to register your short term, you need a business license.
Business license required. You don't know, you don't need a sign for that, you just say a business license required, do business in Deepwater Bay.
Where would you put that sign?
What business? Out of each end into the city, break a little welcome sign.
Yeah.
Break a little welcome sign.
That's a good place to put something, just put regular information.
It's a good reminder.
Particularly for our annual cycles coming up. I would say that if we were gonna put it anyplace that was gonna have the best chance of getting notice and I don't wanna say it, would be those welcome signs. People see them, but I hate, I have seen other cities do that, I have seen other cities have their, but I really don't even know that part.
Future kiosks.
We have pretty.
Which will, as soon as the chamber finishes, those will belong to us, basically, they don't currently belong to the city.
What do we do?
Those welcome signs with the whale, they don't belong to the city, but they will be, cuz, uh, they're gonna get assigned to me. Assigned to, I say need to.
But that's kind of bigger face, welcome, get a business license.
You're just in your good.
That future kiosk.
I am working on with the idea of getting some kiosks, you know, we tried it last year, we're gonna try again this year.
Like Fran said, the website, the city website, we need to, um, provide room there.
I wanna redo the business license website with these new changes, in particular, last year, like saying this is what you need to make sure.
Well, you know, the area around the post office is not very visually, okay, attractive anyway. So we could put one on either side of the road, business license, why, so north and north and south.
You have that ready?
Hmm.
Okay.
Maybe something like that would work.
Oh, you can get a word from that.
So the next course of action is to.
Well, I don't know, uh, where everybody is, if you had a chance to digest it, are there any more changes, do you like, I mean, Council Rec had some suggestions on me.
Um, so I I looked through and I made I made actually quite a few comments. Um, in the category section where we we're starting to talk about, um, lodging, uh, again, I have a vested interest in lodging, that's what I do, it's how I function. And I I I really believe we need to separate here the vacation rental lodging from the hotel and hotel lodging.
Hotel motels, okay.
Only because, um. Vacation rentals, I believe, and I think we need to work on the vacation rental licensing and how we do all of that and.
Yes.
And price that and and that kind of thing, but, um, it's also very difficult when you're when you're doing them by number, number of units, to be able to say. You know, vacation rental is one unit, it sleeps five people or six people, and we don't have any way to really prove any of that. Because we don't do anything on our licensing side of that, so it it's very difficult, where a hotel. It's an easy number to verify, you want their webs- website, they'll tell you, you know, people they can they can house, so. Uh, this also seemed like a very high number to me, considering that we're already giving the city twelve percent of tax, so it just, it it seemed like. Very high compared to the other businesses that we have in the city. Um, and then one other thing related to the just the the crisis in general. Um, what I've heard everybody say is that we're asking everybody who does business here in the city to, uh, have a business license, and I'm just curious. If all of the contractors, uh, the people who are working to paint houses, um, the people who come in and. You know, like I I had a sign replaced by Salem sign, did Salem sign have to have a a city business license?
If we find that they do, don't tell my secret, but we talk Facebook, it's my secret.
So I I guess.
So we find them on Facebook and we see that they're doing business in Deepwater Bay. Which they usually are, we will go after and get them to do a license.
Okay.
Um, if we know that they're doing it, we go after, but we don't always know, but we're watching. Sorry, we're watching.
Um, I then look, kind of moved down through the whole, the whole ordinance itself. And there were a couple of sections that, um, there were callouts where, um. The ordinance is gonna make a separate application and pay a separate license fee for each business or location, except as otherwise provided in the ordinance. Only one license is required for mobile businesses such as housekeeping services, et cetera, and again, then I'm I'm thinking. Uh, vacation rental owners, vacation rental property management companies, I'm a vacation rental property management company, I manage multiple properties in the city and other cities. Um, and I think we we need to figure out how we're going to charge companies like me, and I'm I'm tiny, but. The Merivis and the Macasas and and all of them are, you know, significant impacts to the tourism in the city and like we need to keep that in mind when we. Start looking at what we're gonna charge these people for paying their business earnings.
Totally up to the council, so the housekeepers would be the ones that like, yeah, tries on Facebook, that they'll come and clean my house, I believe, not one of this. Um, but not necessarily the ones who work for La Sella, Council La Sella, or for for Walmart. Unless they would be, this is what we're talking about, the transient business license, where they might not, they may be a ten ninety nine or contracted. Housekeeping service, you know, that they're not actually employed by the business. If they're employed by the business, they would fall under being a business license, I just wanna make sure that's clear. If they're employed by employer, they don't get a license, but if they're a ten ninety nine, that's when we would say, you need a license to do business in our city. So that's just where that's coming from, what you guys ultimately decide to do or what you ultimately decide to charge is really up to you.
You know, Mayor, I, uh, I I believe in in getting as much money into the city as we can get, but. Man, I just, you know, I hear you talk about ten ninety nines and I just look at all these working people, you know, we talk about working people sometimes. This is a, an encumbrance on them, home based businesses with absolutely no. Impact on the city, yet we wanna find out who they are and what they're doing, why, they have no impact on us. And I, and and finally, I just think if we are gonna do it, we should just make it one fee, fifty, seventy five, all over the map fees, don't make any sense, I think it should be like the hundred bucks. Make it pure and simple and give them a nice certificate and call it good.
And you have that option as well, but if I would like to remind the council that at the revenue work session, I was told to maximize, take all of our. Current fees and make sure that we're getting the appropriate amount for that, so if we're going to call into question some of these things, then. It's gonna be challenging for me to come up with a proposal, um, if we're not gonna try to maximize, and I mean, I'm trying to review all these, but. If the council wishes to do a hundred, that is absolutely the council's, um, it's more than we do now, which is generally eighty six fifty for most people. It is less than some of the other places have to pay, cuz it's based on number of, uh, employees, so.
And I think Council Miss, Council in La Sella had a good point about lodging, about motels, it's almost like we're punishing. Uh, with the this jacked up fee and, uh, again, maybe they should just be the same as everybody else and I don't know.
And I would also just like to remind the council that the Harvard Commission thinks that Harvard's getting punished. Uh, that we're putting the weight of everything on them, so this is one of the attempts to balance the left.
How are we putting the the weight on them?
Increasing the fees, going for, um, charter head tax, um. So mortgage, increasing that, various different, look at that dog's faces, all this like.
This this is apples and oranges, we're talking about.
Yes, we're talking about increasing the rates, uh, we wanna be fair and consistent to everybody.
So the the way that this is written today. Um, lodging, so I have a vacation rental, um, that currently pays eighty six dollars and fifty cents. Under the way this is written today, that vacation rental is gonna pay four hundred and seventy five dollars. Because they are a vacation rental and they fit into that category of short term rentals.
Fifty, what, what changes?
And and I just think that is way, way, way more expensive than any of the charges for a single vacation rental to do business in the city.
I'm not sure that's the case, but I can check that, I'm not sure that's the case, cuz I think they charge other places, but.
I I, Lincoln County for another dollar.
Cuz I got this from Seaside.
Um, Lincoln City is, um, about a hundred and seventy five, I think is what they're they're.
There are more and there are less.
Right, exactly, so, but I just think this would be the highest that I have seen ever and. I'm I'm just concerned about it because, um, it's it's basically making it difficult for short term rental businesses.
I think we need a few regulations, I don't think we need to say a hundred dollars because that means some people, um. Will have more reason to pay more, will be paying the same amount as a home based business or a one person shop.
So I think that the, and and I think this needs to get to when we start looking at lodging and vacation rental licensing. We need to say, that's why I proposed separating these two things, because vacation rental licensing and lodging is, they're they're very much a different, different animals.
Aren't they, but just pulling this out and not not even touching the business license that we're lodging?
No, no, I, I, well, I would say lodging, I. I would say that we need to keep it in for lodging, but I would say there needs to be a separate line item that goes for vacation rentals, because they're currently paying, like I said. Eighty six fifty annual for a license, and I I think that needs to change. I think I, you know, we need to look at vacation rental licensing, we need to, I've I've talked to you about, you know, having an inspection by the fire department possibly. Uh, making sure that they're they're licensed, um, and that they're, uh, following specific rules and and so. I think all of that needs to be addressed, but to go from eighty six fifty to four hundred and seventy five dollars is, it it it'd be, it would be very difficult.
The short term rentals should be more expensive than hotels, is that what you're speaking about?
No, no, I don't, I don't, I don't think they should, but I think that the, I think we need to optimize that and say. Uh, short term rentals need to have, not just a, they're doing business in the city, so they need to be doing business with a business license. But they're also a short term rental, there needs to be something that goes with short term rental that says, you know, you've been inspected, you are out to code, you don't have all that stuff. And there should be a fee associated with that, that that is part of that process, cuz it's gonna have to be confirmed.
Figure it out about two separate things, if you will, one, the business license to say you can have a business in Deepwater Bay.
Correct.
And then if you wanna have a short term rental, here's the other thing you have to do.
Correct, there would be two things, and and so I would think just for vacation rentals, we just follow your internal license.
Okay.
And then you would have a separate short term rental license fee that would be for short term rentals. I'm okay with lodging and doing it by the number of sleeping spaces, um, like I said, I, this number just seems very high to me. For the two hotels we have in town, um, but I I I don't know what the numbers were on the last year's list, I have to.
Don't we have more than two hotels?
He gets.
I have two.
Well, I was, oh, you're thinking, you know, it's like.
I'm talking to you about me. I'm talking to you about me.
I know, I know, I know, Deep Bay, very, very, that, oh, that's a.
I so I just I just didn't know that what I paid, I can't recall what that number was, so. Um the other, they're down further in the ordinance on on number eleven, she's specifically called out an idea.
Yes, I know, I know, yes.
That's um we probably just need to talk about, and that's the idea of allocating monies to specific uh funds. And I think it's a great idea. Is it appropriate for business licensing to go to a street fund? I don't know if that's the appropriate place for it, but um in section eleven, I I personally like the idea of allocating dollars to specific things that need to happen in the city. And I think it makes it much more uh uh much more subtle to the public that says, you know what? This is what your money is going for.
Yes.
And so um and it it would be clearer in the budget where that money's coming from and where it's going.
Just come from Lincoln City. Lincoln City does this.
It's why I like the idea.
They they allocate certain percentages to this. It's pretty, I thought it was pretty neat, I mean.
So that's the end of the report.
Yes, Mayor. So um the um idea that um apartments, assisted living, fall under the same lodging thing. You know, we really need to provide for apartments. And um there, the business fee for apartments, assisted living, I I'm not sure it should be as high as those for hotel lotels. It's serving, you know, residents. So that's one of my thoughts there, same thing with trailer and campsites and stuff, that those are more transit perhaps. But then the other thing is on section eleven, I I really don't like any more going to tourism information. I think the street fund is a really good idea. Um because, you know, businesses are are impacting the the street. So I think you could put more there, but I think just having it go to one, is that what it's called, streets and utilities? I'm familiar with that.
Well, we have separate funds, so you would have to say you want a certain percentage to go to street, a certain percentage to water, a certain percentage to sewer. You also can put perhaps crack or the just a general one.
Or could we create a new fund?
Yeah.
And if.
Oh, create a new fund, you know, what do you want it to be?
If there was. I I haven't given a lot of thought on it. I like the idea, but I I think it's.
There you go. Now, there's a lot of great ideas here. Um so I can put some notes down, but I don't know what we're thinking is maybe we should do a work session so you guys can dig into this more because it sounds like there's a lot of good feedback and things. I can put these things together, but we haven't really solidified, solidified anything yet.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think this is a really good start, but I need, I think we need to spend some time on putting lodging into subcategories because there's a lot of different things happening there.
Mm-hmm.
And then decide where we want the uh percentage of.
And how much can you add categories?
Mm-hmm. I think that's, yeah.
Could everybody uh send their ideas to Kim of what what we could do?
Yeah.
And then she could compile something and and uh.
I take what she did, put it together and put it in the next meeting?
Okay. I like that. That's great. So we'll just table the rest of this until we compile our ideas for our, we really appreciate it.
It's just amazing to see how every state's so careful, so different.
And you might think about that, you know, like if you're a vendor uh and you're delivering goods and services to a little town like Deep Bay, I mean, it becomes really complex. Every little town has a different thing and it becomes a drag on the economy, I think. Uh so we need to keep this thing simple in the end. I want to keep people coming to town. That scares my away.
Me too. The size of the businesses, the more fun I get to have.
Uh okay, well, we'll back until next time. Uh you want to update us on a the next one, the Harvard?
Okay, um so without doing a lot of details, essentially the council, I provided you the material um the complaints that were were given and uh essentially what the council should decide tonight whether or not we want to schedule an executive session and discuss options for this. The council oversees, the committees and commissions, so if the council chooses, it would be appropriate for you to do it, which is why I just think you just have to make a decision if you want to go to the executive session. Not tonight, but schedule one. And I I don't know. We've already opened a public conference, so you don't have to.
Except it's on the agenda, so public comments are a section that's not on the agenda, right?
Right. So they, so you could actually have people bring, um if there's anybody that would like to uh address this before the council makes that decision. Anybody would like to comment? Anybody online?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yeah, so um I personally think that the um apology given was really heartfelt. We all make mistakes and hope people learn and happen again. So um I don't feel need for an executive session myself.
I agree with that. I think that people have bad days, they have issues and what have you. But I think you have to look at the full length of a person's behavior and judge that on the majority of the time when they. More professional.
Any other comments?
Mayor, thank you. Um when I preface this by saying that you know, you do know this, that over the years, that uh even as a civilian before I became a counselor, one of the things that I have always been concerned about is uh is an individual exceeding their authority, whether it's a city councilor or a commissioner, uh it uh has the potential to put us into legal jeopardy. Uh but this goes beyond that. And uh I think that uh as much as I don't want to have to say this, I think Commissioner Martin needs to resign her position because uh she used it for discrimination and for personal infringement, which is in direct violation of our ethics laws. Uh anything less would not be taken responsibility.
This could be discussed in an executive session.
Well, I think that this is not necessary in an executive session.
It is.
Well, if housing is going to be discussed if we decide not to have an executive session. This needs, and I think that this is kind of an ongoing problem. I think it would be best for the citizens to uh to listen to this argument.
In my my thoughts, yes, it would be best to have a a holistic discussion regarding commissioning committees and put something in place to say this is what we do if there is an action. But it's whether or not you feel like, because she's a public official, even though she's not an elected official, it would be appropriate, more appropriate to have this discussion during executive session unless she wishes an open session and she does not wish an open session.
Well, I'm just saying this, that uh this can save us all a lot of time, by the way.
All of you were putting uh.
You don't, I was supposed to say, there's no motion for an executive session, so you're not voting, you don't need to. So nothing happens. You you have spoken to the commissioner, correct?
Yeah.
And she all heard the apology, yes.
So we're in concurrence as a council that we are not going to an executive session.
You do not need, you have, no one has made a motion for an executive session. So you've all concurred with the exception, I think, of council piece of leaving. Anybody else? Nobody's really said anything, none of the notes.
Well, I said something.
That's why I said it's a council. If you want to have an executive session, then the council needs to agree, and I'd say in this case, to a motion.
I don't understand why we need to have an executive session. Uh you know.
Because it could be considering disciplinary action, like requesting the commissioner step down as a um steward, I run. It's part of the O R S that says anybody in these roles can choose to have an executive session and have any kind of disciplinary actions discussed during that unless they wish an open session.
Well, then uh I make a motion that we do have an executive session to discuss disciplinary action uh with Commissioner, with respect to Commissioner Martin.
It's been moved to hold an executive session. Is there a second?
Uh can I ask a question before or do I have to wait?
You have a motion, you have a second before you can discuss.
You have no second, the motion fails? Okay, um you go ahead and update us on our projects here.
Um I think everything's in here uh that we did. I did want to just um update you regarding Gina uh under uh our one street cooldown. Gina has been uh calling everybody in the state to find out just how little we can do about this issue and how much little support we're going to have on some of these serious issues with that. But my biggest problem, my biggest concern is the raccoons and rats. So uh I found out Gina's updated me recently that we can uh have those animals, the raccoons and rats trapped. But they wouldn't allow access to her property because just taking them away from other people's properties who's not doing anything, it's not being fed. Uh so they have a reason to come back. Uh so we're still, we're still investigating. I've been trying to work with Lincoln County at this. Oh, Gina.
Yeah, uh just have a quick uh question. Can we go back for a moment uh for the record? Um Kim, your question to the mayor was you have spoken to the counselor, correct? Um but I didn't get an answer from the mayor. She nodded her head. So can I get a verbal um answer for that for the record?
Sure, yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, uh so there's there's like a a bunch of pieces to this this issue. Um I'm trying to work with Lincoln County and their solid waste program to get a drop, a dumpster drop off out there. Um and there is also another agency in Lincoln County that's working with the homeowner to get a dumpster in there. But part of the problem is, is that, and Council Rec knows about this because you heard me bring it up during the meeting today, is that uh the property owner will not want to have the deadline set on why she has to get that dumpster filled up and removed. We're going into the winter season, rainy season, which has been a problem. So essentially, we got a lot of pieces here, and I think that because these are different issues, I'm going to have to go through the, remember what we did for the right of way and doing the violations? And I'm going to have to go through the whole process again with this. Um Lincoln County, the deputies, they can only do so much because there's no ordinance on the book regarding the eating and wildlife raccoons. There's no state statute against that, so they can't do anything on that. We looked, we can't find one, so if you know one, please let me know that we've searched. Um I've been working with the sheriffs to try to figure out how we're going to do this. There's been complaints from the neighbors about um abusing the animals, the dogs. And uh that's good. We have the, the deputy's tried to address that, but he hasn't been able to see it. So there's just a lot of things going on right now. Uh I'm going to have to put a more detailed staff report for you at the next meeting, but I think we're going to have to go through the steps. And but once, the other thing is, is this is council basically is going to make this, but because we have no municipal court, the sheriff can only take us so far, then we have to actually sue or put things apart.
Another question, has she made any more threats to us or?
All the time. She told me, told Gina recently that she won't take any more orders from her, meaning me. But yes, constantly. Um our crew rides by, she flips them off constantly.
So this dumpster would be free?
Yes, to her.
To her, she knows.
So that she knows that. So I think it's fully legitimate to um put a deadline on it because it will be, will have to be in the right of way if we don't want to be in the right of way.
Right.
And um we don't want to let people, you know, use it again. We just really want it to be for, I mean, it's it, we're trying to assist her. And um just, I think, just I idea that she has a certain deadline because it's a free disposal service for it.
Well, what, I don't know what would be a reasonable deadline, because I can get it together with um the manager. We can get two dumpsters out there right away, but we have to, they're going to fill out vouchers. We kind of have to think about what the deadline is, so. Uh but then again, when the deadline comes and goes and it's not even cool, we need to talk about what our next actions will be.
Is there another way that we can help her? Can we uh send people up there to help her with this stuff? Some because.
With moving things out, however.
With mov- moving things into the dumpster.
I don't know that she will anybody. She gets told when I said that there was a program or movement about whose property they've literally cleaned out by a county, moving all the RVs, everything. She doesn't want anybody going on there touching her stuff. She wants to still grow. We've also tried to get her assistance another ways when you, Gina's done amazing work on this, but when they refuse, when they send somebody out, they contact her, and they refuse assistance, they're banned from coming. And that's the case what we have to hold on to.
She seems to never realize, and I think that's why we missed the wall.
I I just think it's it's just her situation. I don't think she's, it's just her situation. So I'm trying to work things, uh doing the best I can, but this is uh.
So difficult.
This is, it it's more difficult, maybe difficult by the fact that it's, you think that all the support, places can support it, but they can't.
Um let's see, um where's the last one to tell you? Um updating quickly on the seawall and um dredging. I did want to tell you that because it doesn't look like I thought it did here. Um the seawall repairs, the engineer, Kenji, who we usually work on, he's going to come out sometime this month. And they're good, and they're, they're going to, yeah, I guess they want to actually put together a structured plan to when they're going to come out and inspect our seawall and make sure this is doing okay. Um they're not concerned about the movement. I said that's very little movement, but we are concerned about the practices, that that sort of stuff. The Harvard dredging, they checked dam, um I I updated this. We did meet with them. I was all on a path to getting a letter from Chief Archer, Senior Chief Archer. But in speaking with the new coastal program manager, we did not, we were not on the schedule for twenty twenty-five. We, they, the president at that point when they put it together, and I still didn't even fund Deep Bay at all. We originally asked for, they originally asked for a hundred one, went to five thousand, and then it didn't equal to anything. So we weren't on the schedule to get done in twenty twenty-five. However, this coastal project manager found some capacity, what they call. And so we are now on the schedule for twenty twenty-five, but uh being on the schedule doesn't mean there's money for it. So right now, there is no money for it. So one of the things we have to work on is getting with our legislatures, looking at the appropriations funds. They will put in for something in December with the regular legislature, but we don't know how much they're going to get. So you know what, what she explained to me is why they have responsibility to do this, there's no responsibility for them to pay for it. It's only if they can get the money to do it and if they have capacity. Um but at least we're getting a step closer. Oh, and we found out, because Brady was worried about where the dredge dredge material would go. He was told that it had to be, could be in the ocean. That's incorrect. It can be in the ocean. So we don't have to worry about that. So reprob.
I'm sorry, incorrect it can be what?
In the ocean.
In the ocean.
Yeah, normally it goes in the ocean. Every five years, they dredge the bay and it it have pipes that go out, uh past the the beginning of the sea, so it's, but it's same and so. But we were told at a meeting last year that we have to have a upland disposal site for all the material, but that process changed.
They gave you a map and everything showing where it will be deposited. And then she liked the idea of maybe seeing if you do, or his idea of do the check dams at the same, from before the, you know, so it doesn't, then all that checking just re- wrecked down into the the nice harbor, maybe just great. So that was just an update, recent update on that since I did this.
Um it was supposed to be attached to email, but I think it was stored. I didn't see it attached to email. Um, it was supposed to be attached to email, but I think it was stored. I didn't see it attached to email.
Neither. That page two.
Oh, okay. Um, I will send you, uh, that. Did I forget to attach that? So what happened is it was reported that they were moving soil into Wood Market country's overrun an acre storage. There's, so, there's the part that they got, they were, they were working in the back part of the E E door. Um, they did have an approved 1200C permit from D Q for one to five acres. So D Q didn't really have a heartbeat as long as they're following the detention con designs and but what we have heartbreak with is that they surveyed the creek, what is creek? They, they had a survey area. What they didn't have was one of the scientists to do it. So they've been told they had the issue of stop work order. They're not gonna do any more work on that property. They have to, according to the 1200C permit, they have to maintain the erosion, so they have to keep actively making sure that that stuff's not going, any debris's not going to the creek. And they have to hire weapons, so this is give us an actual weapon of delineation. From what we see, it, they could, they look like they're out of it, but they need to prove that. So now, the other concern is that there were, there were trees that were planted. Um, there's no, we have no way of knowing exactly how many trees were in there, so what I'm being told is that there's not much we can do with that. However, I spoke to the property, the developer, and he's willing to talk about what more, like maybe planting swamp highway 101 and the creek side. And I said that I would talk to, uh, you know, get the, get the council's thought about, we could talk about, start with the planning commission because he's gotta go through the process right now. But he's willing to do some extra plantings. He just doesn't know what they are, so we, then he's hoping for some better. Obviously, he's not gonna be able to put back any mature trees, but there might be some things he can do. So maybe Council Rec might ask him. So that was the, the violations of that. So he's, oh, and I also had it reported that they're moving debris from other places. He's not taking any debris. I was out there. There's no extra debris out there. He's moving things to make sure the erosion is managed per the 1200C permit, but he's not doing any development of the property.
He's gonna take it, build it.
He's not taking, he says, no, I'm not taking it.
Any other questions on the staff reports yet?
I have a number of things. Um, on the financials, you're talking about the audit. So we've hired this auditor. It's audit season. Why are we not getting audited? We're, we're paying her as much money as everybody else would be, so we should be in her schedule to do an audit, just like all the rest of her customers.
We're, um, trying to get 2021. That is, they're working on their current customer. They're gonna have to come back and get with us to this. She plans to start this summer.
But we're customers just like all the other customers.
I, I understand, but we're not actually paying her anything yet until they actually do the work, but-
But if she doesn't have time to work with us, then maybe we need to look for somebody else because it's, I mean, we've, we've hired her months ago, and we still don't have anything.
Oh, we're, okay, we're talking about two different things, I say. The CPA is the one who's helping us get together so that the auditor can do the work in December. But the auditor is the one that can't actually do the work until she's seen some of the data and knows what they want them to do is they want someone to come in and evaluate for 2021 to know what they have and what they need to report because there's a lot of mess in there. So it's like they want her to look at the balance sheet, stuff like that, so they can see about getting them in the schedule.
So before the auditor will do the work the CPA has to do?
They want the CPA because they're used to working with her. We didn't, I did talk about this when we awarded the contract, and this will go to be the step, and that we probably wouldn't get something going until, um, after December because of the timing, and we're not, they have their current plans to do first. Now, I'm gonna reach out to Tara and see if she's still on board for December. Um, but, uh, hopefully she'll be, their bandwidth will be sooner, but I gotta get somewhere out here to 2021.
Okay. So under harbor fueling, um, are those multi-year contracts? I mean, shouldn't, shouldn't these contracts be something we're reviewing regularly, like every year or something?
There are a lot of contracts we should be reviewing, and we're going out for bid, but, but they just haven't. How long have you had parts? When's the last time you went out for a bid on that one?
Twenty eighteen.
So it's been in there a long time, I thought it did.
There were no mechanisms to track contracts, and then they were due to expire. There is one now.
I'll come back to that. Uh, there's, uh, the catalog repair, it says that it's going out for bid at the end of July.
I meant to update that, but he has not told me. They just got the final design. They had, they dreaded to come. I had a little promise with, forgetting the, what was it? They had that problem with it, something on it. I forget what it was, but- Yeah, so I have-
So there's, it, it's not ready for bid yet.
Very soon, they tell me. I will have another, I, I'm sure it will be bid by the next meeting.
And then, um, under streets?
Yes.
Final design is included in the packet, and I didn't see any kind of-
Of the Bay Street?
Yeah.
What did you do with the Bay Street?
They were out there, they were out there. We took a mail today, but I can have them back up, um,
Yeah.
During the week, you know, it's been by.
The, we had the, um, I can, figured you'd wanna see it bigger. It's-
We had it on the table, and we, it's, it's, it's in the office, but we have it on the table. We had it a bit today. It's weird to use the table, but we can have it back up.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have, we'll put it back out here. Please feel free to walk in. Um, there is one little hiccup on there that we need to kind of, um, we kinda need to address that I'm waiting to find out with the contractor that's doing the design for it. It's originally when they were doing the design, they didn't include the cove redesign, but that's a very important piece of it. So we are gonna get some information about what that's gonna look like and what we can do with that. And I'm hoping, and I know there's a, I know there's right on, so, to get in the market, so, but, uh, wait and see what that's gonna look like.
It's still, uh, starting with Horn Park in there.
Yes.
Um, under parks, Big Tire Park. Uh, you said council needs to decide something. I don't know what we need to decide. I'm a group thing we need to decide, so
This might have happened if you came on board.
Is there something we need to do?
Um, so are you familiar with Big Tire Park?
I'm not.
Okay, so it's up on Sunset, and it used to have the bench on concrete memorial bench.
Mm-hmm.
Well, because everything's split, it's all the way up to the edge. We had the bench in the, 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 um, concrete removed. And the idea is, what do we do with it now? We had to rip cook fence up because it's a very dangerous area.
Big portion slid into the ocean.
Yeah, it's, it's the, it's the hillside slid in the ocean.
Yeah, I guess my question is, you, it, it's called up, we need to do something, so is it on an agenda somewhere that we can get it? Whatever, whatever needs to be decided.
I can tell, I can give you that information, but you guys need to decide. Do you want us to go forward with designing a platform?
Why don't we bring it to the agenda to discuss our options?
Okay, 'cause that was where we were at. The idea was we could either do a slip real fast or later we'll run it back.
Oh, right, yeah, right now we have a, just a ten, ten, uh, law movement.
So do you wanna incur the cost to have a design, a platform design put in there? And he said it was going to be expensive. But not the design, the platform.
I'm not in favor of, well, hillside's falling off this side of it.
Yeah, see, the idea was, and I love that platform that, um, Council Rec-
We too was around this.
Where he keep platform, it's a wonderful platform. But he said it's going to be expensive. John just ballparked his idea and said, but if the council wishes, I can ask him to go ahead and go get us a pla- get us a design platform.
If that is still slipping off, why?
Oh, and he would have to, see, part of what they would have to do is decide, find out how much is slipping off, and maybe go over there.
So we need engineering on the slipping and-
Yeah, to put the platform in, or a slip real fast. Which, where? Um, that would be the decision. One of the things that, uh, Kent was going to do was to find out if we can actually do that. Now, I'll have A P S see if we can-
Where?
Up against the, not right where the, uh, where the cliff is.
Where the orange fence is right now.
Not right there, but back a little bit.
Where the orange fence is.
Not that far, because Council Rec wanted to make sure it was a viewing, and as she pointed out, if we take away something, we have put something else back in. So we wanna try to make it accessible, but whether or not we spend a lot of money to put a platform in there that we may not change.
I guess I was just asking, it's been on this report for a long time, and it says council needs to do something, but I've never seen it as anything that I, so.
That's because of, before you-
Okay.
What, what if the, um, platform isn't where the bench was? It's in that grassy strip, um, to stop on that property line, um, to the, um, east of the, uh, because then you can still see into that beautiful-
But not go all the way to the edge is what you're thinking?
Well, there's a grassy strip that, so it'd be elevated, um, and take some of the pressure off that.
Okay. It'll be on your next Friday. I can run by there to see if he thinks it would be any, any of a better price. And if he thinks it will, do you want him to give a whirl?
Well, like, just like a ballpark figure before, we have him- Draw the engineering on how much is slipping up down there.
It's, it's not a- Well, she's hearing further, further back, right?
Yeah, you brought that area off with right access elsewhere.
You better be able to look at it, and have you got?
And same thing with the elements of street open space. That's a, that's at the very end. The elements of street is public property that has a fence for private property across our pushing space that is. To me, that's a low priority for getting back or we should do.
Well, and see, that's the thing. If the council is recommending that this takes priority over other things, then I'm willing to step it up, and it's going to be getting attorney involvement. They will probably fight us, or my-
No, no, it's, it, it was, it just needs a survey. It's our property. There, there's-
Right, we already know that they're approaching. I'm pretty sure that they do.
Well, then the next somebody was gonna write them a letter.
So what we would do is we would send them a letter and say, you need to remove the fence.
Yeah.
Our attorney seems to think that they will say that has been there forever.
But then we can't, we can't take public property by adverse possession. Just needs to be done.
I, 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 the council wishes this to be a priority. I will have the attorney send a letter out to them, asking them to move their fence.
I thought that was already done.
No, there was just, that's good. I just have not directed him to do that. We need to do one of the things that I, I thought might be in our-
It's a gardener family, I think.
The who?
Gardener.
Partner.
Well, I'll email him tomorrow.
It's pretty obvious that they're approaching. I mean, it's way obvious. So maybe they'll just do the right thing.
Maybe, but maybe not.
We need to find out.
We're gonna have to let you know.
Those are our questions ahead.
Thank you.
So you're gonna send the letter?
I'll have Cory do it. Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll, I don't have time to try to figure out what type of letter to do, and he'll do that easier than me.
But I guess could be a survey to affect moves forward.
Any other questions on updates or the?
Yeah, are we gonna discuss the consensus on the summary of recommendations that we received tonight?
That's not on the agenda. That's just for your information. Uh, any closing public comments?
Oh, um, I'm gonna say your name wrong, Mr. Tan- Taylor. Did you still, I was just told by my sister that you wanted to make a comment. Did you still wanna comment?
Is he, is he hurt?
To technology.
Okay, I guess not. Oh, there he is. Um, okay, what he said is, I would still like to discuss the Liz Harvey. She will not address her behavior if the doc on the evening that he told me to.
Stay here.
He, he, he should, just public comment. He can make a public comment.
Right, but you don't have to.
Right. If he wants to say something, he can. It's public comment.
Oh, wait a minute. Now he says something else here. I'm sorry. I need to scroll down more. Oh, since you will not address my concerns, who may I call to arouse our concerns? I can't believe that you will not address her behavior toward fishmen that paid for it to dress her harbor.
An apology was issued and accepted. It's done.
Okay. Thank you, Gina. I did not see his comments.
Yep, you're welcome.
Oh, Brady, council comments, closing comments. I have one, um.
Oh, pardon me, he said something else. He would like to know if he's still able to moor his boat and fish out of a harbor. Absolutely. We are not letting anybody's harbor morgue go unless you choose to do that, but that is not happening. We are not canceling mortgages. Um, Bill, you can call me tomorrow. Um, four, five, four, one, seven, six, five, two, three, six, one. You would like that in writing? Absolutely. I will send that to your email. I have your email.
Any ready for comments?
Um, on September twentieth, it's a Friday afternoon at two thirty down at the park. Uh, we're doing a volunteer and staff, uh, thank you party. And, uh, hope all of you can join us. We're gonna do burgers and uh, thank all of the volunteers, and so we sent me out notes to everyone, uh, to thank them for stepping up and making us such a wonderful place to live, so.
What time is that?
Two thirty.
Two thirty?
On the twentieth. Brady, do you have music, right, Brady?
Yes.
Did you want to start with your comments?
Oh, thank you, ma'am, for coming. Several weeks ago, I sent a letter to, an email to the city administrator asking if we had been collecting systems development charges on permits filed in Liddyton Beach and Lincoln Beach and all the area to our north that we serve. Uh, because it seemed to be that people hooking up on our system should be required to pay systems development charges. And it's a concern that is borne out in this, uh, document that was given to us, Oregon consensus for, just read through one second here. Uh, concerns were shared about the status of the existing aging wastewater infrastructure at both the city and G S D, and the significant upgrades needed to improve the system. Uh, if we're not collecting systems development charges on anything that is hooking up into our system, it seems to me to be a, a, a real problem. And I was wondering if this is, uh, if you know the reason for this historically, or is there any kind of O R, O R S that would prevent us from, uh, collecting S D Cs? Uh, that, that, and, and to be clear, the county has issued thousands of building permits over the duration of this agreement with, uh, Liddyton Beach, including a one hundred and forty unit resort that has contributed to the complete inundation of our sewer plant. Uh, and we have not, and if we've not been collecting S D Cs, how are we ever to improve our sewer service? And keep up with the, the pace of development in that area? So can Brady, can, you know the historical context of this?
Uh, I can answer that for you pretty easy. We cannot charge another, uh, another realization outside of our city. So we can't go after anybody that's in Lincoln County and in other cities. Now, what we can do is we negotiate the contract, which we will have to do within three years. Uh, we can then try to get that, what that looks like. We can decide whether or not they have to pay something for every development they put in, but that is the only time we can do it, when we negotiate the contract. But we have a lot more flexibility with that.
So you're saying that we are prohibited by law from assessing a systems development charge on a system that we operate?
They're separate. Right, they are separate, exactly. The O R S, the city council says we can only do things within our city boundary, within our city limits. And we're incorporated, right, within our corporate city limits. We can't, that's like Portland can't come over here and tax legal day for anything they feel like they should be getting money for. We can't tax, we can't do that in another district, in other organizations, city, whatever you wanna call it. Um, but because we have this relationship from them, with them, and they have, we have to take their wastewater, we can negotiate something in there with them and say that, okay, well, you're building, and we want this percent of every building permit that you issued. But that's the only option we can do because under the O R S, we can only tax with them our founders.
You know, uh, Mayor, do you think that we should have a legal, uh, analysis of this?
No, no. It's, it's state law.
I can send you the O R S council to see if you would like to-
I would very much appreciate it.
That's it.
So are we gonna, are we gonna, it seems to me like we should, uh, uh, at least consider opening up negotiations with, uh, our partner on this to, to do this? Somebody's paying S B C somewhere. Somebody's paying S B C somewhere, they enter their own districts. And they'll be using that hopefully to break their own sewer system and get it off ours.
Any further? Council's Saturday? Um, so I'm a little bit concerned about how this whole, um, organization came about after the city council said no. And that first project plan said no. And, um, I really don't wanna discuss it all week, just, um. I came to council in May, or April, and asked your permission, and your permission to open this up as part of the negotiation.
And just, this doesn't, this isn't holding anybody to anything when you're updating your report. You'll see it's clear in there that they recognize that the city council has chosen not to report with any kind of discussions at this point. And they talked about two things that I think that they need to do. But it's very clear in there, they know there is no point in moving on. This was a, an idea of maybe gave some, our, our discussions, because we have to start discussions at some point. Because three years we are good before we know it. Um, and we'll still have to continue to take their wastewater, so it's really some discussions we need to be get happen. But there's, we read that, and they, they understand that the, that the council's not in favor to do, it's clear.
Yeah, but what, and I will read it, but what I saw was that the staff indicated they were interested. And, um, when the council gives direction, it seems inappropriate that the staff might have undermined that.
Um, I didn't undermine anything, we had, we were, Kathy was talking to the regional solutions and we talked to them, just like when they did, and made people their input, gave them the input, um, regarding the issues. Um, it was just kind of a way to see if they could help the situation, and that was all they were trying to do. Didn't cost us anything, it was just their idea to try to help the situation.
I heard the mayor say that we approved this discussion.
I don't remember anything of that.
I'll, I'll send you the minutes.
Um, do we know if they have made any effort?
No. The last, the only thing that I know is that they tried to get money for wastewater treatment plan last year, because Kathy saw them and I also heard through, uh, through the connections with, uh, leading州市 cities, that they just didn't get it. I don't know why they would have done it, but they must have had some, so. Uh, as to what they're doing now, I, I work with the staff, but we don't talk about this. We talk about something we need to talk about.
Um, did you have any? Just a question, do we need to address the letter at the end of this packet from Doc's side?
Okay.
And then another thing I wanted to bring up again was, um, getting recycling containers down here for disposable, you know, or drinks, drink containers that are worth ten cents, so it'd be good, nice to have recycling.
I think our only concern about that is that people tend to not use those. They tend to throw trash next, or our guys would have to spend a lot of time cleaning them out. Cause you know when we do pep leaders and all those events, we have the red trash cans for recycling, and we have the black trash cans for garbage.
I've seen other cities do it and they have those, they're waste.
Maybe there's, maybe there's a bottle thing that.
Yeah.
I have some great experience on that.
Okay, I'll talk to Scott.
I brought it up a few years ago, but I would like to bring this in.
I'll talk to Scott and see his ideas.
Um, I would like to see the council take up a reconsideration of the rate increase that we had on our water and sewer. Uh, when I went back after our session on, I'm talking about decreasing money when, when we're trying to increase money. But when I went back and I read the sewer's rate study, um, the rate increase was very contingent and tied to a bond issued for, bond being issued for the water treatment and or the sewer. And so we've been collecting money that is, um, uh, tied, well, was tied, the way it was portrayed in the document is that the money should be for debt service and clearly indicated how many dollars and cents. And that's what I'd like to discuss with everybody on the agenda, and is, you know, we, if we're not able to use it or we're not doing it as per the schedule, then perhaps we need to roll that back until the city's ready to do that. And then at that point, I would like us to reconsider doing the rate study, because with the cost of, of inflation and everything, I'm not sure recovering our costs as it is, so. I'd just like to see if we can get that on the agenda, I have some kind of.
Where do you want that before the head tax, the, the, the transaction tax, the fuel tax, and the horse life? Where would you like that on the list?
Well, this is, I don't, this is money we're collecting right now, but I'm not a, I'm a hundred percent sure we should.
And, and that's the, this would require some research, or do you just wanna open it, uh, put, give you the tier and everybody can discuss it? What, what, what kind of research do you want?
We have the rate study.
Okay, so if, I don't have to provide anything.
I don't think there would be any need to provide it, I mean, we can point out that it's, here's where the rate study is, and then we can talk about it. I'd be happy to tell you why I think we can roll that back.
Do you want it on the next agenda? Uh, so I don't have to prepare anything, it's really easy for me to do, I just.
I mean, that's, that's up to the mayor's agenda.
And I, yeah, I'm asking, that's. So I will just be providing everybody a copy of the rate study, okay?
The detail, not the power.
Right, yes. And just, just FYI, when we read that, let me, later you will find out that one of the things that, that maybe things we should do is do a rate study and pay for it, so just keep that in mind.
We are adjourned. We missed the stuff.
Oh, Kathy?
Would you pass the, please, Kathy?